Good morning for this committee, the whole meeting, and we'll start with Commissioner Rexroth. Will you lead us in the pledge? A moment of silence, please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk take the roll, please?
Commissioner Kramer?
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Present.
Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Present.
Commissioner Alguier?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Well, we have a proposed agenda there with two items on it. Is there anybody that wishes to add anything or take anything off? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move to approve as presented.
Seconded.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda approved, seven zero. This time, we thank the public for coming and invite you to the first of our two public comment sessions this morning. You have three minutes to speak to us about anything that you might like to have us know about. If you'd like to be recognized, please raise your hand. Yes, Mrs. Wilman.
Jill Wilman, Centerville Township. I said in my last public comment that I wanted to support the employees and lobby for a better environment at the government. I was particularly concerned by a comment I heard from the commissioner at last week's board meeting. I was so upset that I went back and listened to it again to be sure I heard it correctly. The commissioner said, "I don't talk with employees. It's not my job." It came across as being very condescending, as though talking to employees is not worth their time. I have never had a boss, which of course is what you commissioners are, who failed to talk directly to me even if I wasn't a director. No wonder the employees feel unappreciated and probably unnoticed. And as Dr. Shulton said, perception is reality. The remark I heard only worsens a bad situation. I know there is a rule that people who are providing public comment are not allowed to address or attack commissioners by name. But obviously, the rule does not extend to commissioners' comments. I found it very unprofessional and inappropriate when it occurred. Am I to expect that I may sometime come to a meeting and be attacked by a commissioner in a public meeting? It would seem to me that the same rule should apply for everyone. I'm also concerned that some on the board are not interested in hearing suggestions from others who are involved in the issues. And I hear the statement, "Don't tell us how to do our job." But obviously, something has gone wrong. And since you are ultimately the ones responsible, as the bosses, you haven't been able to figure it out by yourself. So maybe the wisdom of others is needed. Don't reject it. I would like to also say that the letter you received from a group of elected officials who directly manage a number of employees encouraged me. The willingness to offer suggestions and be part of the solution gives me hope. I know this is an emotional issue for everyone, but as a citizen and observer of your meetings, I hope to see a more professional presentation in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this morning? Yes, Ms. Wyler.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jan Wyler, Rachel. I just got some information that come right from your request. And I understand that you all got that. What about you guys? So I've got a lot to address, but I'm going to be trying to tell you that there are a lot of insiders, public servants that have come for the clerk, for Commissioner Lautner, and the deputy clerk. And I think the survey that was done was a political fit job. You've got three conservative women, employees, that were targeted as the Mean Girls. And these happen to be women that believe in the law, the rule of law. And for that, I believe they're being attacked. So I'm going to be very specific and be... Wait, that you'll have it. There are two pay stubs in here. And the bottom of it has been wiped out so you can't tell who pulled these pay stubs. These are pay stubs of Morgan's Wiki, who made a whopping... Sorry, I'm on one. A whopping $1,900 for an entire year, January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. And why is this daughter of our deputy clerk being targeted when there are all kinds of different nepotism hires? And honestly, we don't have people to staff our positions. So we bring in family members, do we not? I believe there are a lot of them in county government here. And then we have another one for Alan Crawford. I understand he's the husband of the clerk who was hired by Chat Janik. Why is his pay stub in this FOIA? And why do we know who printed it out? Apparently, there's a letter in here somewhere from the county administrators saying, "This is a nepotism situation, and we should not do that." And that greatly concerns me because it seems like there was a coup that took place in '21, Rick Robbins getting his neighbor into this position. Everything is being directed toward her. And we need to look at this that was given to me by one anonymous person.
Ms. Wyler, your time is up. We'll have some more.
And it's the actual culture that we had someone investigate.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherrod.
Any other public comment this morning? Yes. No, please sit down for the microphone because we're live streaming.
Keep it doing, Lelandoff. I think with the problems that we have with the employees, I think if we took that pledge of allegiance more seriously and really abide by it, that might take care of a lot of problems. Also, this fiber rocket cable being shipped throughout the county. Right now, my provider, if the power goes out, I get no internet service. So with this new provider, are they going to credit everybody's account by the hour? If power goes out, their service goes out. And thirdly, I just saw a report on CNN. I don't normally listen to CNN. But there was, they interviewed people coming out of the New Hampshire primary. These people came out, they admitted they were Democrats, they registered as a Republican to go in and vote for Nikki Haley to offset the Trump vote. I think that's very dishonest. And I think that's meddling in a Republican primary. And I really hope that meddling doesn't happen in Michigan.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? Yes.
Here it is, Centerville Township. Good morning. First, thanks to every one of you for your service as our commissioners. Thank you for placing such a high value on truth and for your desire to do what's best for our county. We really appreciate that in every single one of you. We know that's what your motivation is, and we appreciate it. Thanks also for remembering how important civil and robust debate is and for demonstrating that crucial element of our self-government community that a lot of us have never done and are astounded to watch play out. But we learn from history that it's very important to a well-functioning self-government community. So thank you for that. We see how difficult that process is. We appreciate you going through it with us and for us. Thank you. Just two points. My first one is regarding a prior public comment this morning. Please give all of us clarity on the idea that the Board of Commissioners might actually function as bosses of all our government employees. I have not made it through the bylaws of the rules of order, and I appreciate that body, but no, I haven't gotten through it all. And I don't see that anywhere, but I might have missed it. So please, help us understand if indeed our elected officials are to function as bosses of all our government employees. That seems like a huge task, and I wasn't aware of it when electing. But, you know, we do want to know what guides you as our Board of Commissioners. So please, give us some clarity on the actual legal role. We understand that perceptions are perceptions, and we're all going to see things through our own lens. We can't control that. But we're interested in what the legal role is for you guys. My second point is in regards to the Board's decision to move forward with the separation of finance from the responsibility of the county clerk's office. If you are determined to move forward with creating a finance department, free and clear of the county clerk's office, please consider making Kathy Hardestfeld our finance director. Miss Hardestfeld has clearly proven herself by all accounts during an extraordinarily difficult period. It looks like she's gotten things straightened out, back on track, and in a good position. And we appreciate her, and we trust her. And so again, if you're determined to move forward with creating an independent finance department, we ask that Kathy Hardestfeld be offered the finance director position. Thank you for the consideration. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Bill.
Bill, we're here, County of Township. And again, this sign says, "No fraud" on one side in great big letters. You can find a lot of information on this at tcfamily.org. On the other side, one person, one ballot, one vote, one day. That just happened in Argentina, in Taiwan. And people were really happy with it. And so where there is no cheating possible, no black boxes, that we don't know what's inside them. Actually, we've seen them cheating lots of times. So why are we using these things? That would be a question. Why is your argument commissioners and county clerks and township clerks and village clerks for using these black box voting machines? Why aren't we using this? Can someone give me a good reason? Okay, so the state orders it, or the state voted for it. They voted for it after they sent out all these unrequested opportunities to apply for ballots. That's supposed to be done by the legislature, not the Secretary of State. She broke the law six nights. Are we going to follow that? Or are we going to do what's good for leading our county? Can someone tell me one good reason for using these voting machines? What I'd like to talk about now is a summary of the election fraud in the 2020 presidential election in the swing states. If you Google that, you'll find this 32-page article which has 142 bullet points of election fraud. And just looking at the introduction, it has often been repeated that there is no evidence of fraud in the 2020 election. In actuality, there is no evidence, Joe Biden won. Ongoing investigations in the swing states reveal hundreds of thousands of votes were altered and not rightfully cast. And here's looking at the swing states. In Georgia, Trump was ahead by 12 percentage points. In Wisconsin, he was ahead by five. In Pennsylvania, it was... This is five. Georgia, Pennsylvania, he was ahead by 15. And Michigan, 10. So what happened? Why did they have to stop the voting? People are looking down and be like, "You have it. You've heard this over and over." Yes, this is the most important thing going on. If we don't get this right, we're all slaves to this system. Give us a good reason why we're using and not trusting the people in this county to count the votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? Thank you very much. Any commissioner comment this morning?
Okay.
Mr. Sherman, I have one.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for all of your public comment. I just want to say that, you know, we've heard a lot about listening, 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 listening. And a person needs to listen to the entire dialogue. And I think it's kind of unfortunate to pick apart a comment and not listen to the entire dialogue because certain commissioners mentioned talking to several, several employees and several employees talking to them. And as someone said, "We have a legal duty. You hear it in our oath. We are doing our jobs." And it's very interesting that the moment we step out of that, we can be just as targeted for micromanaging or just as targeted because we're talking to that department head or that elected official. So it just makes it very interesting, and it makes it very fun. So thank you for that. I think this will be a very interesting FOIA to read because I would like to compile a list of all the connections within this courthouse. Because it used to be, it used to be the joke that if we passed a nepotism policy in this county that we would lose over half of our employees. We have several connections within this courthouse. So to pick two is kind of alarming. And we will, so we will have to look into that. So I thank you for all the comments today.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Kramer.
In light of us passing the current survey, I'm going to propose that, after talking to a few people that I work with that are in leadership positions over organizations, not necessarily governmental, but that we should potentially look at an organizational structure review to find out how all of our departments are working and what problems are necessarily bottlenecking us and/or creating these rifts and divisions that are happening within the building. So I'm hoping that we can maybe research that and take a real good look at that because I think that might be contributing to some of our issues here. So that is all I have for today.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, at this point then, we're ready to move to our agenda. Ms. Allen, would you introduce our guest?
Absolutely. I'd like to introduce you all to John Amerin. John is the Government Leadership and Finance Educator with MSU Extension. He's actually here today at the request of our interim finance director, Kathy Hardestfeld, the board, and also some conversations that I had initially had with John. But today, the intent of his discussion is to talk about government structures and specifically how governments have transitioned, county governments specifically, when there have been changes in the dynamics. So John, thank you so much for being here today and appreciate your comments on behalf of the board.
Thank you. You're welcome.
A reminder that this is a committee, the whole. It's relatively informal. So if you have a question, just get John's attention and ask the question.
Absolutely. And you are not alone. Just want to leave off of that. You are not alone. Many counties over the years have been through similar kinds of transition. It's taken place in different ways. And I found some interesting results when I started talking specifically about this kind of structural piece with some other county leaders. And I'm going to skip ahead just a minute and tell you first who I talked to. In... Can't read my own handwriting. In Roscommon and Manistee counties, I talked with both the administrator and the board chair. And the invitation was to both of those folks, figuring that I would get kind of board perspective and then also the administrative perspective as well. In Ogumaw, Crawford, and Chavoygan counties, I talked with just the administrator, for whatever reason, board chair wasn't available. I know it's a scheduling problem, for sure. In Wexford County was a little different. And I'll come back to that more a little bit later. There, the conversation included the administrator, the treasurer, the deputy administrator, who is their HR director, and a finance consultant that they work with on a regular basis who also knows a little bit about how things happen in other counties. She shared just a little bit of that as well. The clerk was invited and wasn't able to make it. They had a reschedule because of the matter of last Friday, and we had that conversation. So that was a really interesting conversation. So I led off the conversation sharing that, as I had been told here, there were kind of three structures that you consider. One is basically the comment where the finance director reports to the administrator. One would be to add a CFO title to the administrator. And I kind of took that to mean more, a deeper financial background in the world with the finance director reporting to that person. And then the third one being the finance director reporting to the full board. And so I kind of presented the whole batch of questions. Said, "These are the three kind of structures that there would be." And we would love to hear from you how you're doing this company, what your thoughts are on those structures, pros and cons, to the extent that you were around when your county transitioned from the clerk doing some of the financial work to having all of it in the administrative side, or whatever knowledge you have of that. Share some of the pros and cons. How you went about doing that? What you see as the advantages and disadvantages of what I can tell you, the possibilities. I also want to add that those conversations were very much, and my comments with you today, are very much about structure and positions and not at all about individuals who hold such positions. Really speaks to kind of the best workflow, the best way of working. The CFO title is one that I don't see much in town yet. The four, when I did a Google search, the four that I saw were kind of what I expected. Row, Wayne, Genesee, and Pier, all larger counties. In the statute, there is... You have a lot of leeway in how you create that administrative structure, but primarily, what we see is an administrator. Or some counties will choose to use the controller statute, which gives that specific title. And in statute, then, invest some of the responsibilities that often have been done just sort of by the board's office, gives those responsibilities directly to the controller. And to that point, are you at all familiar with...
Could I ask you what you meant there?
Sure.
And what you just said gave some of the clerk's responsibilities to the control. I'm not sure.
There are things like accounts payable, payable. Some of those, and I don't have the statute right in front of me, but there are a couple of those finance pieces that when finances are all in the hands of the administrator's office, have typically historically been done in the... And I'll come back to that a little bit. But there are at least a couple of those that the controller statute specifically says those responsibilities belong to the board. So by hiring a controller, you're kind of making that decision already. Some folks don't like the controller statute. They don't like that position. One is the title.
Yeah. But this is more...
It's about financial control.
Yeah. It's about, and a lot more, control, too. Not only does it take responsibility away from the clerk, it takes some responsibility away from board commissioners. And does it take a five-eighths of the board to get to... Has that changed? It would take, I believe, five of seven to remove a controller once put in place, correct?
I think the percentage, I think the fraction is two thirds.
Two thirds.
It's larger than the majority.
Five of seven. Five of the seven.
And that, and I was coming to that.
Okay, go ahead.
That is one of the things about the...
And it's an unelected position?
It's an unelected. It's hired by the board, very much like the administrator. It just also has that little statuteary piece. One of the other objections people just don't like is it sounds like that person's in control. So that's reasonable.
So what do they take from the clerk?
Claims taken, audits.
I would have to look at. And I might have that with me. Can we come back to that?
Okay.
So just to be clear, when you launch into this, you're launching into the three structures, you're launching into CFO reporting directly to the board structure. Is that what you're commenting on at this point? Just so we're clear.
In the four counties that have what they call a CFO, they don't think that person reports directly to the board. I know for certain in Wayne, because Wayne is a charter county. And so that whole structure is different. They have a new charter. Genesee, last I knew, had kind of an eyeball structure. Pier has just made some changes. So I'm not, I don't know the details there. But when they're using the CFO title, I'm thinking that, like I said earlier, that that's indicating, A, they've been given some deeper level of responsibility in finance, probably have a deeper level of experience and education in finance. But it is not the same as having a controller.
Correct. There is a distinction because the controller statute's a legal statute. The CFO would be a structure we chose and defined ourselves.
Exactly.
So just, so basically, that almost says that there are four structures, then. The controller is different than having a CFO.
Yes.
It also takes some duties from the treasurer as well, don't they?
I believe so.
The controller does. The CFO wouldn't.
CFO would not, no. That would be set up as we would determine. Yep. So that's, the controller's not one of our options if we're even going to delve into them? Is that the agreement already?
It's not one of the three options that we agreed to look at originally. And part of it is just to that. I think there was just a hesitancy because once they're there, they're very hard to get rid of without a majority board vote. So that's why I don't think the controller actually was one of the three options we considered originally.
As a financial...
As one of our recommendations that were accepted by the full board. We recommended three options and looked at the controller option and found the same... It's not a very, you know, it's suited to a much larger county, and it's not very welcome because it's, once you do it, it's very hard to control it again. So that was not part of our three options that we, that this board approved to look at.
Okay.
And I will have a little more comment on the controller idea, just based on the conversations with a couple of committees. What I have in my hand here is a printed copy of the Ottawa County Court of Appeals' writ of Commissioner's Supreme Court decision from 1987. And the issue there had to do with who was actually going to do some of the functions. The question, I'll just regive this summary paragraph. The questions presented are whether the statutes provide for the county clerk or that a county controller shall, one, receive and review bills and invoices from creditors of the county and process accounts payable of the county; and, two, prepare checks and payment of accounts payable and payroll checks to the county employee. We conclude that the statutes do not mandate either that the clerk or controller shall do so, but rather that it is prerogative of the county board commissioners to determine whether the clerk or controller shall do so. It is within the authority of the Ottawa County Board to provide that accounts payable and check writing function shall be performed by its controller. And that same principle then also, I'm quite certain, applies. It's the board's decision who's going to do those functions. And so you also have the authority to handle those functions too. And I think I did mention in our previous conversation, a little bit of wondering on my part, whether there was some sense of incompatible office situation with a clerk doing the work that's the authority of the county board, given that the clerk is an elected official. I've never seen that in place of a court decision before. I was able, through a highly respected county administrator, Richard County Downsided, to be connected to an attorney who's done a lot of work. In fact, I believe there's one of the attorneys for Ottawa County arguing that. Got an excellent reply back. He pointed out several things that I have read in the past, and if you recall, and just made it very clear that it's not, for a number of technical reasons, it's not an incompatible office situation. So if any of you heard that and went, "Oh, that's maybe a concern," that is not a concern. Very, very...
This might sound incompatible office between... I'm sorry, I'm just not following. Go ahead. For the clerk's office and...
There's a, in the incompatible office statute...
Yeah.
It basically says one board or official can't be subordinate to or supervisor of another elected official.
Yes.
And as I looked at it, I was always kind of, you know, if you're comparing with any elected official to do specific things that are your responsibility, I was a little concerned about that. And it's absolutely not a concern in any way, sure. I just, in case that was sticking in the back of anybody else's mind, like...
Did she stop?
Okay, there... Okay, summary of what I heard in these conversations. And there are several threads that were, like, basically unanimous across them. One of those was, don't have a second person reporting. Everyone was very clear, from both the board chair's point of view and from an administrator's, that having a second person reporting sets up more of a potential for posturing and battles and whatever kind of things. We know what would be the top two administrative people in the county. It also creates more work for you as a board, for the board chair in particular, having that supervision both. You wind up being what has to keep them working together, as opposed to a structure of employees where an administrator supervises each of us and finance. And I heard that relationship described by several people, mostly amongst the administrators and the board chairs as well, as one where the teamwork is critically, critically involved. Where actually going so far as to describe the administrator as the manager, the team builder, the one who pulls all of that together, has knowledge of everything that's going on in the county operation to some extent, and can pull that all together, working with the rest of the team to bring you a single proposal to look at, convey the pros and cons, and make your decision.
So that opinion would argue against our option of a CFO direct report, then, of our three options. I would say that's not a good idea.
They were unanimous.
That was...
From all six counties. You really don't want to... And it wasn't just about CFO or control, you know, whatever. It was, I think if anybody was thinking, "We ought to have an HR director that reports directly to us," and we ought to have whatever reporting directly to us, you run into those same kinds of complications.
So, John?
Yeah.
So we have a county that doesn't have an administrator, but you must not have talked with them, because everyone reports to the board commissioners there, correct? Is it Calcasca, at least it used to be? There's no administrator, they, everyone reports to the board of commissioners?
I don't know exactly how Calcasca structured that. I'm guessing that it's probably department heads that all report in some way to the board. Some counties, in addition to having clerks carry some of that financial administration, have also... I kind of think that's what Masaki did a number of years ago. Paid an additional amount of money to the clerk.
To be a minister.
Who served also, really, as county administrator.
Yep. I get, yeah, I think you're right. Okay.
John, I do know that Calcasca has just hired a new county administrator.
Okay, so it was Calcasca. They had, and that was a, that's at their first, then?
No, they had, I know a bit of that timeline because I was involved in just a little. They had a controller a number of years ago.
Okay.
And it sounded like there were some issues there. I don't, I didn't know any of that. At one point then, that controller decided to leave and go elsewhere. And they made the decision to not refill that position. I couldn't fill it, I don't know.
Okay. Late 90s, probably, perhaps.
Yeah, it would have been late 90s or very early 2000s. And so then consequently, they were working with the clerk to handle a number of those responsibilities. I don't know exactly.
Okay.
And they asked me to come in just about a year ago. We have a presentation of various forms of administrator structure that are commonly used in the state of Michigan. So I did that presentation for them, and, you know, the other piece of that to move this question, is that often individual commissioners would take a bigger role in overseeing that particular law. There were a number of them leaning towards going back to having some kind of an administrator. I think at the end of that conversation, they pretty much were unanimous that they had that presentation. I had, I knew they had posted it and been looking and had heard.
And when I said that, and I don't know if they finalized the deal, but they've selected candidates, and I think, I think they've made an offer.
I did hear that one of the considerations in their conversation, and I don't have clue about the issue here, and we will not have, thinking in terms of maybe leaving some responsibilities with the clerk or court if they, I think there was a point of frustration in the search process as well, season, it's definitely not a time. They may have considered just wanting to continue. I know, I've met a clerk there, I hope it was her on something, a little 10 years ago. And what was shared with me by someone else was a concern there about structure. And if that clerk decides to retire and not work, which I understand is a possibility, she hasn't made an announcement, did they want to... How was that unknown in the near future going to impact the decision making? That is... I had no clue that that's a concern here or not.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how much of these said, but I think you're dead on, so.
So the second key point that came through quite clearly was that the administrator doesn't have to have that deep level of understanding. As long as there is a finance director in that administrative group who has that deeper knowledge, has that deeper background, go back to that thought about the administrator being the team leader, the team convenor, the getting the group working together, and making sure that all of the input comes in to make the decisions. To the point actually, that one of the Manastee counties, Lisa Dalla, is the administrator controller. They use the controller statute. Jeff Downs is the board chair, and he was, he was as adamant or most other than anyone that I've had, and not by any of the board chairs, about going to the controller. There's some kind of a historical issue there, way back 20, 25 years ago, and there were elements of using that controller statute to resolve that particular issue, and so just a strong, a strong argument. But Lisa doesn't have that deep background. She has enough understanding to grasp what's going on, to then be able to have a finance director who's the expert on finance and has that background, has that education, and brings that strength to the team. Just like oftentimes, you're likely to have an administrator who's going to have more strengths in either HR or finance, probably not lower. So it's the same kind of depending on your staff that you would have if an administrator didn't have the HR background, had the finance background, and had to depend a little more on your retired. Most of the counties I talked to said, "Use the controller statute." And this isn't exactly a quote, it was Jeff who said, "You know, that one extra vote, that's the one downside." In his opinion, that's the one downside of having a controller. If four of you are unhappy with that currently, you can make that decision change. If she's a controller, it takes a while. And like I said, I think that it's a two-person...
Supermajority.
Yeah. And, go ahead.
So what do you think the difference then, in his mind, would be between a controller and just a CFO?
The difference clearly is that the statute gives certain responsibilities to the county. And I guess, you know, one side of my brain says, "You have those responsibilities, how is that any different working with another elected official?" And it's not just all these issues with the clerk. That's where the finance piece goes, but other kinds of things. And it puts those responsibilities then specifically in the controller position rather than what you have in the other community administrator. Seems to me like either way, the statute and court cases are clear, but in counties that have been through that over the years, a real preference for using the controller. And who was it? It was Al Vandover, the current administrator in Kent County. I remember a conversation with him seven years ago, talking about that whole issue of that supermajority we needed. And Al said, "You know, if I'm, if I'm sitting here and I've got four commissioners who aren't happy with what I'm doing, and it just takes a, they have to give it to me," he said, "It doesn't matter. I'm done. I need the support of the board, the majority." And my sense of that conversation is, and I think if I was in that position, if I was a county controller, the only difference that majority vote, or supermajority vote would make me is it might buy me a couple of extra months to go find something else to do. That relationship between an administrator and board just requires such a level of working together, trusting each other. Yeah, and beyond that relationship as well. If I was a member of your board, part of the way I would see my job, I'm, yeah, I'm working for the people of the counties, that's critically, critically. I need to be a part of a team going through it. And I teach this to boards of all kinds, nonprofits, local governments, whatever it is. I think it's true of all of us. If I'm on your board, yeah, I have a responsibility to the people who vote for me to come in and say my piece, make their opinions known, make my thoughts known on how we ought to do certain things. But once we as a board have made a choice, here's the path we're taking, board. That's where it gets tough for elected board members. It's a little easier when you're on a nonprofit. For elected board members, you still, the people who vote for you have to understand where you're still coming from and maybe that you do agree with that one. But it's also critically important for the, the working relationship, the reputation of a board in the community, that the board speaks as one. If I'm one of those folks who voted, and all six of them, who are, I don't know, who I just, or it's eight of them, all seven of them are on the other side and say, "Yes," when it comes time to talk about that issue or publicly in some way, shape, or form, some days I might still feel like I ought to express my concern. But I think I also have real responsibility to say, "At this point, it doesn't matter."
So John?
What my concern is, we as a board made a decision. We as a board made a decision, that's our policy at this point, and I'm going to do everything I can to... And I understand that's not...
Back to the, back to the administrator/CFO discussion.
Okay, good. And that was that. That was one of those, yeah. So most that use the controller statute...
John, this is of the counties you spoke to, this Roscommon, Manastee, Ogama, that whole list, there?
Yes. Calmon, Manastee, Ogama, Crawford, Chavoygan, Wexford. And as I mentioned before, I chose those six because population was fairly similar to Lillona, and general fund revenue was fairly similar to Lillona. And those were just kind of the two measures I used to look at. And then knowing a little bit about those counties, if there are some clear differences in the way, but similar enough situation.
I guess I'm just not getting why having a controller is better than a CFO?
It is not.
In their minds, in their minds, why would they?
I think a common thread in those who really liked the controller statute, there was some kind of a situation at some point in their history where, whether it was real or perceived... or perceived, from the part of folks in county government, having those, having some responsibilities vested in the controller, in the statute.
So, I guess, and that's, I guess to hop in and help, there's a difference between a CFO is what we would define it to be by our decisions, exactly, nothing more and nothing less. A controller is defined by statute, so it takes some of the.
Responsibility.
Responsibility, chattering, arguing, debating, if you choose it, yes. Spirited debating, yes, spirited debating. But in any case, that's the crucial difference. The one roles are defined by law, right?
Yeah, you have hit the nail on the head. If you call it a CFO, it's just like an administrator and it's up to you to decide basically entirely to what you're going to have that.
Then the fear you have to get over with this, with the controller side is a supermajority to get rid of it. That's really, that's really, that's.
Well, if you think that could become an issue.
That, and a controller, I believe by that statute, does not have to have financial background, but yet they have all that control and all that responsibility and all those duties. So, we're a CFO, you are getting financial knowledge, bottom line.
Why would you hire someone with not, with no background?
It would be ill-advised of us board to hire a controller that has no financial background, I would think.
I'm just stating the statute. I'm not saying I would hire someone without the financial background, especially if that's where we're going, but that is another difference.
I'm not sure where we're going. I just looked up Cal Caskin of, Chet Janick is one that wrote the job description, which is kind of interesting, and it was admin and CFO. But if I have a controller and I have a separate finance department, okay, is that controller in the finance department?
No.
I mean, let's set the offices up, okay? We have three people or two people now in our finance. Is that controller, is he part of the finance, separate from the county clerk? Is it, is it a standalone office?
The answer two.
There, if you have a controller.
Okay.
The statute puts most of those financial responsibilities in their, basically in their office.
So, they answer to the controller, is that a better way to put that?
Any other, any other staff doing the financing. I suppose a controller might come in and say, hey, this is my responsibility, but I'm willing to have staff in some other office do the work. I can't imagine that happening. I think if you went controller, all of the finance staff would be in the controller's office. It would be the controller's responsibility. And it's, it's pretty difficult for a controller over here supervising and really having an understanding of the day-to-day operation of finance staff who are working.
I know this really isn't on the agenda, but this concept has permeated my brain. The idea of having an organizational structure review going hand in hand with, you know, with the responsibilities and different titles that you're providing, I feel like those two things could go in tandem. So, this board would understand better how our day-to-day operations are and then getting the leadership necessary in order to conduct all of these operations at their full capacity. Do you think the board should consider something like that? Because I think we're kind of maybe lacking in that direction a little, some insights as to the entire ecosystem of the government and how they all function together. Because that's where I'm struggling, like we're going to go ahead and make this choice, but in order to know which choice is the best, we kind of have to know foundationally how these are all going to function together. Because I think that's probably one of the reasons that we're having these issues, right? With your professional opinion, I'd like to hear some input.
Not knowing all of the detail, it's really, it's hard for me to find a figure out this is the piece.
Right.
There might be some value to doing that. I don't know that I've ever heard of a county here. That's, that's a new thought.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to, I really don't know.
Thank you for your don't know.
Those are hard?
Yeah, they are hard.
Westford County, the conversations yesterday, this is the one that was very different. Because we had the entire team in the conversation, except a lot of the reasons, scheduling at the last minute, the clerk wasn't, wasn't able to be a part of that. Joe is an administrator. They continue to do those accounts payable and payroll functions in the clerk's office. They had a long time, at least 20, maybe 30 years in each position, clerk and treasurer, who, between them and the administrators who worked at the time, created probably the ideal, the three words that I think Joe used yesterday, communication, working together, teamwork. And that has been a real feature in Westford County dating back to those previous clerks, clerk and treasurer, excuse me, elected officials, and carrying forward to today with an administrator who's the former utilization director, so has been a part of leadership for a long time there, a deputy administrator who was somehow involved in administration or finance again, support role, the new clerk, new treasurer, new a few years back, who had, I think, worked for those previous folks. So, there is just a long time track of that kind of everyday, everything teamwork. And if I've got a question, Joe, still in the administrative role, functions as, how did that, that team leader on finance? But they all work together so well that there's just no issue with where the work is being done. When he needs an answer, they can work that out. If he needs to get input from multiple different directions, he pulls them together and they talk about it and figure out what kind of recommendations. So, in a situation where, where you still have what looks kind of like the older style, you know, back in the day before we had administrators, the real key to making that work is we are a team, we are going to work together, we are going to, we are going to make a good presentation. Question?
No, I just, I kind of want to highlight something that you said, because I think it hearkens back to kind of some of our, our issues here. I hear internal hires, people who've shown loyalty to the county, people who've been there, who have done the job and have a good understanding of how everything functions at a, at a very base level. That you're stating with Westford is that they really promote within and move to, it sounds like they move people to various positions.
In terms of the administrator, yes. In terms of the treasurer, it was the voters who looked at those.
You mentioned a deputy as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the deputy, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of other thoughts. I have spent a little time asking you about finding, paging through the report that we I think if I was in the role of trying to take the effort forward from here, I think I'd start with that as a, just kind of a basic proposal. And I would pull together all of the key players. And I'm not, I'm not asking for work, I'm not, I'm retiring in April. But if I was a part of any of our county board, I think I would start with that, get all of the players together and say, let's walk through this, piece by piece. And if there are places you have concerns, places that you think we can do better than what's recommended from there, let's talk about it. Let's see if we can improve it. But it just looks to me like, until I really got a little deeper in that, I was like, and of course, I'm not a finance expert, I was like, where do you even start? How do you know all of those steps and all of the people and the positions and how do you coordinate all that? And I looked at that and I went, there's one way. And so, maybe, maybe that's a good one. The other thing that I think I want to wrap up my comments with and we'll go to any more questions. In virtually all of my governance programs, I use a quote from, and apologies to the U of M fans in the group, a quote by Tom Izzo in a tweet from a number of. That basically says teammates who work together are the tangible difference between good teams and great teams. And I just, I've seen examples of that over the years and I think that's a good principle. And I'm open to whatever other questions, comments.
John, you want me to hand these out?
Oh, yes. Go ahead and hand those out, yes. I did want to comment on those. The timing is purely accidental, amazing.
Yeah.
A couple, a couple of my colleagues have put together a program that they're calling the Governing Essentials Series. And it will occur, it's on to, it's March, August, and each of the three sessions will happen in March and August and December. One is on the Open Meetings Act, one is on the introduction of parliamentary procedure, and the other is Components of Extraordinary Governance, which is the piece of, I'll give you a real short history on that. I was, we were teaching some, some governance things that were out of the policy governance system. And that's a great model for some organization. It doesn't fit in places like a town should be hiring staffers or a nonprofit would be a board. But I started looking at other governance models, studied eight of them, said, some of these is missing something. And I, I started compiling them on a sheet of poster paper and came up with ten. And that's what the Components of Extraordinary Governance, the ten key points that the board needs to, missions number one. I purposely did not remember them, but missions of the county. And you can participate in this program, you'll get that. If you want to know more, I do have a free, like free pager, I have some copies of that with me that kind of gives you a rough outline of that. That's, it's lived several years ago.
John, are these the same folks that you co-taught us are required?
They are.
For sure, okay.
Yeah, let me give you a little more introduction here. Eric Walcott is based on campus, and he does a lot of similar kind of work. His focus is more in finance and at a little higher level, it's not, I don't think he's gotten down with the details of the kind of government, but Eric is now the leader of the new commissioner. Yeah, I want to call it new commissioner.
Score.
New commissioners. Yeah. Eric's now the leader at the, by the way, is based in Antrim County. Her specialty is parliamentary procedure, effective meetings. She's a great facilitator. If you're going to do some strategic planning, she's a great person to actually put that in. And they are the two that really.
John's given us a lot of information. We, we do have our capital improvement plan discussion, but let's make sure we get questions for John first. So, any, anything else for John?
John, I just want to, I just want to recap. So, how many counties did you speak to, the total number of counties, just?
Six plus a little help from Canada, so.
So.
Basically.
Those six counties. And out of the five of the six, the recommendation was to use the controller statute. From what you, I'm trying to, I'm trying to bullet point what you presented to us today. I said, you said the vast majority, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I think it probably was four of those first five before I got to Westford. Yeah, I didn't write it specifically. Chauvinian, yeah. Ogama County I know is very strong controller. Manistee was very strong in controller. I think Rosco County is pretty strong in controller, so. Yeah. Four or five of those five.
So, I'm trying to pull up like big themes that I am trying to glean out of this and a couple of, that's a big theme, I guess I didn't expect to hear, because it wasn't something that we had heard before. And then something like, I guess I did expect and I think is still universal is don't get a second direct report. I mean, if I'm, I'm trying to grab big points, context out of what you presented, that's what I heard. So, is that kind of echoed, I mean, there's finer, there's granular information, which you said, but that's, that's like the big themes I heard.
Yeah, and I listened, I think, at the strength of the, you know, the reason.
And these are folks that have gone through things that, that we're trying to go through right now.
They, I know with all of the history with the board chairs, I think, well, one of them is pretty new. The other two have been at it for a while or been on the board, that's what I thought. The administrators, Jeff Lawson's been a, and all of them said, if you have specific questions, you want to talk to them, they're happy to have a conversation. Jeff Lawson's been in Chauvinian for, I would guess, 10 years, been there a while. Ogama County, Tim Delahanny, if I recognize the name, Tim was in planning here in Lillona.
He was our planning director.
Yep.
Just before Trudy.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. He's been administrator in, I think, Assistant Dean in Westford, Dean, yes, currently in Ogama. Crawford, Paul Campo. Fun, fun story about Paul. Crawford had not had any business. And a couple of us were talking earlier, 1998 was when he first got involved with working with county governments. Crawford asked Lynn Harvey to come in and do a special additional study. Lynn said, yeah, you got to come with me. And in that conversation, seven new, I think all seven were brand new, and part of what they had learned was that the past board had just hired an administrator who had quite a bit under the controller statute back then, but I'm not sure. And they didn't think they needed an administrator. And Lynn's response to them was 60-plus, the 83 have some kind of an administrator. You've just moved a young man and his family up here from downstate, give it a year and see what you think, see how it's working after you've worked with them. Paul thought Paul Campo is still the administrative director in Crawford. And Paul, from day one, you know, was working both to build relationships with the board but also building relationships moving from his current treasurer at the time, to a policeman as well.
In addition to the highlights that Doug pointed out. In addition to the highlights that Doug pointed out, you, you referenced the downside on the controller was that we don't have as much flexibility with job description and how we might utilize other team members. And, and the chief financial officer, you could, you could have more flexibility.
Yeah. Whatever other time label you give to an administrator gives you a little more flexibility in some of those roles. Continue to have your authority, leading your own.
So, but we didn't go into a lot of detail. I, I, I didn't miss the, the parallel of, of Wexford County, basically operating as we did before 2021. And before 2021, we had no, we had no audit findings outside of one that was outside of our control. W2 is going out on time, no problem with our audits, bills being paid on time. I mean, I could go on and on. And that was when finance was under, under the, the responsibility of our clerk. So now fast forward with an idea of, of alleviating the clerk of the day-to-day responsibilities of the finance department. Is it possible to have an independent finance department? Yes. Who is that finance department going to report to? The administrator, the board of commissioners, or the clerk? And be an independent finance department? Got to report to someone.
If you, yeah, do you have a separate finance department?
I'm going to go further, but yes, go on.
So three options were board, administrator, clerk. I, for all of the reasons that other folks have said, I would not recommend having this board directly to the board. I think that creates more issues down the road. It, it's more supervision on the part of the board, coordination on the part of the board. And I think it handicaps an administrator to be out of the loop on the finance side of things. When it comes to the kinds of recommendations, the administrator has to bring to the board a variety of things. And I, for that reason also, if it was me, I was sitting in the board chairs today, and I was making a decision, I would put finance under the administrator. Everything except the constitutional and statutory requirements that stay in the board. There's kind of an element of checks and balances there in terms of record keeping and stuff. But I, if it was me, my preference would be under the administrator. And, and then you've got the administrator, you've got finance, and you've got HR together in that department. And you come back to that, you've got that team now who has the bulk of the knowledge that's needed when we need them.
Now, what you left out though, of course, number one would be personalities, and the second would be financial knowledge. And I think that that is key. So.
To, to that point, and I'll go back to the example of Yanastee County, where the administrator was a controller, but does not have that deepest financial background, but has it in the finance director that works in that office. And it seemed to me like there was one other, similar kind of a situation. Say, hey, I'm not finance guru, but I've got somebody who works for me, who has that knowledge, who runs that office. And I know what I need to know to oversee it and to bring all together.
And an administrator CFO you touched on would be technically the same thing, except they would have that knowledge.
If you created the administrator role with that added, you know, not kind of digging out? I don't think I would want to hand the whole administrator role and the whole finance supervision role to a single person. I think you'd still need to have.
Finance director.
A finance director, probably.
But you could have a CFO who's a CPA and has a finance department reporting to them. So they have the deep knowledge with a finance director, reporting to the CFO, so between the two of them, they can sign off on each other's work, et cetera. And that person is also the administrator. I think.
More like high level, higher level of understanding.
So, yeah, so you're saying, you're essentially the administrator, whether or not you give the CFO title, the fact that you might hire somebody there with a finance background. Yeah, I don't think you're going to find, I've got to be careful about saying that, because sure as I do.
We'll find out.
Three days will come to mind now, going, you know, I bet you that person had both. I think it's going to be hard to find an administrator, a single person in the administrative role who has a high level of depth and background in both.
Isn't that what Chet just found for Calcasco?
I don't know who we just uncovered. Yeah, you're making a few out.
Yeah. So, you know, in what we, in going back to 2021, and that is basically what we had without the CFO title. We've got the knowledge there. You know, we, that's what we had, that's what we still have. We've got.
You had the knowledge and the, the background on both sides. You, you checked.
Well, finance reported directly to the clerk. And we have two high-level finance people in our clerk's office that, with, with an independent finance department, they could easily report to the clerk's office. We've got that knowledge there. That, and that kind of falls into personalities that I won't go into deeper. But we do have that today, fortunately.
I'd like to follow up on something that John said, that I think is related to what you're saying, Commissioner. We need to follow the Raymond report. And I pulled up an old intermediate and long-term plan that came from the finance. I think this is old, because there's red on it. But nowhere on this do I see that we will be using the Raymond report as part of our information gathering on this. So I think that's, needs to be written down, that that document needs to be referenced and, and used as a guide. And I, and I also believe that inside that Raymond report, it was firm that there should be a division of finance out of the clerk's office. Am I, am I remembering that wrong? But I, I believe that was like clear, as cited in that report, that, that probably is a better route for us to go. So I just want to make sure that we update this as we go through this intermediate phase plan and long-term plan that we are utilizing the Raymond report, which we paid for, and we got some really good information.
Toughest job of the, of the chair is to get through the whole agenda of our, this meeting and our next meeting. Any final thoughts for John? This has been very helpful, John. Very helpful.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, John.
You are welcome.
And we have his contact information and his email, so if you want to reach out to him, I know he'd respond, right, John?
So he.
So we can follow up.
Might be a little slow, because I have time in these days, but.
And peddling your new book.
New book?
Or your new edition of your book.
New book.
That one's not going to be something that I.
Okay.
That, well, unless you're referring to the fifth edition.
The fifth edition. Right. That we've all used.
Yeah. Three or four years ago, which is now outdated, at least one, and you're all.
Can't be tired.
Next year. I've heard there's been a little talk about maybe benefiting it a little bit, but there's no team really in place yet.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's take five minutes, and then Kathy Hertzfeld will come here and help us walk through the second piece.
We do need to confirm.
There's coffee down there. Never been to those parties. Oh, yeah. Oh, Papa Joe and Flo, buddy.
Well, welcome back, everybody. Jen, are we ready?
Ready.
And Commissioner Rexrode, his finance chair, has agreed to kick this off and make some comments about how we proceed. And then Kathy's here, and I know Kathy and Michelle and others met with the treasurer last night, and so I think we got the people here that need to move us forward. Doug?
So, thank you, and thank you for all the work, Kathy, the treasurer, and administrator, and the chair, put together to get to this point. A lot of work on your part, Kathy, so I think it's just appropriate that you lead us through what's represented here. And I think it's the same thing, kind of a more open format. At any point, there's questions, just be respectful of your fellow commissioner and get her or our attention and move forward. But Kathy, the floor is yours, and, and John is here for questions if needed, so.
Yes, and I did specifically speak with John to work collaboratively, which I think is hugely important when we are talking finance, especially with regard to funding and the timing of that funding, because we do have a cycle that is historical, and that needs to be recognized and respected. So thank you, John. And it'd be great, give him a nod, so look past me, get his approval. So, the 2024 operational budget that you passed in October, or November 21st, we postponed some of the big capital outlay decisions. I told my predecessor, my successor and my predecessor, I guess I should say, and I read the room and understood, I believe, where we're headed with regard to capital outlay for 2024. Starting at the top of your first page that I handed out to you, and I've seen examples that anyone would like to follow along, you do have a commitment to Point Broadband that was made by previous board. It's a $5 million investment in your $17 million project to put broadband on the east side of the county. The outstanding, we have designated 3.2 million of the five of our ARCO funds, leaving 1.8 million unfunded. The projected finish date for Point Broadband is completion in 2024. In speaking with Chris Share cooperatively in a conference call with Administrator Deb Allen, Chair Ty Westall, Patricia Sowes-Little, and myself, Chris assured that he would let us know if he felt that this would not be completed, or if anything was not going as planned for 2024. But the goal is to motivate toward a finish date of Point Broadband by the end of 24, utilizing his expertise to shepherd this project to its fruition. And also that the bills that we get from Point Broadband, that those credits are lit and functional for those residents. So in the next meeting, you will have a proposed contract for the completion of Point Broadband for DCS, or DCS technology to shepherd this to fruition. That's in your next meeting. So we have the 1.8 million that we owe to Point Broadband to complete that contract, the proposed contract for DCS technology for the 2024 work that you will shepherd and that for a total 24 project of 1.896 million. I'm recommending that this board recommend that we assign the remaining ARCO balance of 858,001.7, which includes 15,000 plus dollars of interest that the treasurer has run on those dollars, toward that balance of the project. And in speaking with the treasurer, we have decided effectively that the balance would come from DTR, 1,037,813. That would pay for that as a Point Broadband and for the proposed contract for DCS technology. There's an asterisk next to the 858,000, that's your ARCO motion, if you decide that that's what you'd like to recommend. There's two asterisks next to DTR that will also include heat pump purchases. Do we have any questions about Point Broadband before I go to heat pumps?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not willing to commit that remaining 858 to point unless we also know we are going to come up with money to complete the count, the western side of the county. That, that also was kind of always held in reserve, because we knew we had to finish the western side of the county.
Yes.
So I really don't like having it forwarded that way.
I understand. We do have, at the bottom of the page, as we move through this, we recognize that the charter component is not really a project yet. We're still in negotiation with Charter, and that's another issue that Chris is showing. And we know that with his help, his expertise, the 3.9 million that Charter was asking us for has been reduced to approximately 1.1 million. And that is because with Chris's help, my high, the Robin Grant, we have gotten that commitment down with his expertise. It will become a project once we have a negotiated contract with Charter, which is still in works, because Chris is looking at where Charter has gone into the western side, where it needs to go, mapping that out, and pinpointing all those households. So as he is lending his expertise to that, we have agreed, Commissioner Alber, we have not embraced this as a project, but it was a potential commitment he made to the residents on the west side that was 3.9. Now it's down to 1.1, and it'll get better. I believe, I can't say it'll eventually better, like it didn't now. But we will look at that, the treasurer has talked about that, and because of timing, I think that that might be something that we look at over a couple of years. To fund, we could enter into a contract, but to pay for it, we might borrow money, because it would put us in a bit of a cash flow.
As long as there is a commitment that we will follow through.
Sure.
On, on the west side of the county and not wait a couple of years, there has to be that commitment.
We're all surprised that Gwen mentioned that.
Yes, that's something.
That's why I did not break off your lips.
Imagine that. There are some things you can count out.
And to that point, when we looked at this proposal and the contract early in December, Commissioner Rexrode did bring to attention, we're not in contract with Charter yet, so there was that elemental, let's break that component out, take that as a separate project, which we still have progress. But in the meantime, utilize the expert services of DCS technology to negotiate that amount.
Yes, and so he needs to be paid for that work, because it is work.
And it's, it's separate from the Point Broadband project. Shall we move on to all things within the heat pump area?
Sure.
Um, I read the room, and I feel that we're not wanting to go down the H back road, and that heat pumps is a more palatable maintenance of our heat and cooling system in the building and less disruptive. Administrator Allen and I both understand we've had a heat pump replaced in our hallway. It's not terribly disruptive, but it is unusual activity and, but manageable in stages. In talking with the treasurer and receiving the DNW proposal for 70 heat pumps on lower, main, and second floor, we're looking at about $736,000. We did pass a pricing deadline by December 31st, where the 24 prices came in. I talked with DNW yesterday. I talked with DNW yesterday, and they said roughly check on 2% to the 2023 prices. So, yes, it does come in, that is something that they just said they feel comfortable estimating. I believe one of these heat pumps has been brought into the building, because I just saw invoice, so instead of 70 on this, it might be 16,000, because we just got a bill for one for circuit board upstairs, 12 times something, $500, I believe. So, but with the Point Broadband, the DCS Technology proposed contract and the heat pump purchase, we're looking at 1.8 million from DTR, and the treasurer is knowledgeable and confirms.
So, just a question on this particular item, we would, if we approve this, would be agreeing to proceed down the path of heat pumps and an approximate amount, but not to award to DNW, because that's too much of an amount to not get a second look at a price on.
I can't adjust that.
But I mean, I guess that's my position, I mean, that's.
I suppose the commissioners would have to decide that from the standpoint, but I would just, you have a little bit more of a unique expertise in this field, but I would just caution, I suppose, that we don't hold up progress for bidding something that has been incredibly unique to this building and a unique relationship that we have with DNW that has worked over multiple years. So, I don't know that there is anyone else that can do this work. If it is a matter of sending out an RFP, that will delay the process several weeks, but if the board feels it is a necessity to do that, then that obviously will be the direction that we go.
Yeah, I would, of course, because I'm a member of the board, I'd for the whole decision, but I would say the taxpayers of this county, for a seven, three-quarters of a million dollar spend, it needs a look. And, I mean, based on that, I guess that doesn't mean we would take someone else. I mean, if someone come in $2,000 cheaper, that's ridiculous to accept that bid when we have the relationship, but to not investigate with that kind of money, I think is not responsible. So, that's just my position, although I do support the heat pump and the money direction, okay? So, I'm not wanting to hold up the process, it's just whether I would not be comfortable entering into a contract immediately with DNW.
The only other thing I'd like to mention to the board that's not mentioned in these numbers is that if we move forward with the heat pump process, earlier we had talked about, Gary had, and Gary's with us here, had talked specifically about the need that we will need to update two other pieces of equipment that are part of the heat pump system, and that is the air handler and the cooling tower. And those two elements were approximately $300,000. So, there's no immediate need to replace those, but we know that part of this process will just be the replacement of those items as well.
Okay.
That was great. And we talked about that briefly yesterday. I was more concerned about security pricing on the heat pumps, so this is the area, and we're going to be doing this in stages as well.
Sure.
So, but I did ask Gary to come to, we talked yesterday, Administrator Allen and I knew that Gary brings some expertise about cooling, and we talked about it before, if you recall December.
Multiple times.
Yeah, so these two other pieces of equipment, they're not on the list, but it's down to it. So, go ahead, Gary.
I might add also that the numbers are quite scary at first, but we collectively, excuse the expression, bang our heads and trying to find different ways to solve this problem. What we have been doing in the past is we take the most critical heat pumps, the most huge heat pumps, as they go bad, we replace them one at a time, and so we have done the last 23 of them. And it seems they will work pretty good, but I also need to point out that I've talked to about that, this is ever since we put the baseboard heat into this building, I have noticed that there is quite a big transition, hysteresis, if you will, and I've been keeping track of this. When these heat pumps, especially in the perimeter of the building, don't have to go into heat mode or cool mode back and forth, they seem to last a lot longer because of the baseboard heat. So, this baseboard heat project really did save us a lot of grief, let alone, you know, extra repairs. I just need to add that in there. We're in favor of doing one at a time as they go bad, because like you said, this building is 60,000 square feet, and it's basically maintained its temperature very well, with the exception of a few little minor hiccups, but subject to your consideration. Any other questions?
So, the other thing too, and I don't disagree, just if nothing else, to prove that we're not going to get a better price on this, yeah, we might go, we've negotiated with DNW and negotiated this price down, so I don't know if you want to speak to what is all included in that and where we are, and how, really not sure how we would bid that, and as I said, I'm really not opposed to it, if nothing else, to prove for ourselves that this is a very, probably the best financial move for us to make.
Honestly, it is because Mike Littmiller, who does all of the estimating and all that, we grew a high volume purchasing equipment, so that allows us a greater price, if you will, and he has worked on this for, well, at least a couple of years, to the point where we are giving these at a very good price. The only other issue that we would ever have is, like you said, fire suppression, which is a totally different thing. If we choose to go through and do all three floors divided by two, that's another issue because then we have to get the people coming in there, the ceiling part, and if they do it in one whole swath, that's another hole, if you see the expression, the end or the box. So, that's why we collectively come up with the idea, if we have to do it one at a time, that's fine, that's easier done, but guaranteed based on the markets, the price of things that keep going up, this is the best price. Now, what we also, I need to also interject, this building was put together with water furnace, heat pumps, they're excellent Cadillac brand level heat pump. We're using water furnace as well because they're the most reliable. So, I hope that answered your question.
How would we begin to write that RFP? I know there are other firms out there that do this sort of thing, but would it be written in such a way that we prefer to piecemeal this, considering that we don't want to disrupt the offices?
Well, that's a decision that would have to be collectively decided upon. We, again, we looked at the idea of not interfering with people.
And the other thing that you, and I'm sorry, because we already have you on contract for three days a week up here, and you're on call, you know, how does one begin to RFP that?
This should be separate, this should be separate from the daily maintenance, this is an install contract, that's it.
I agree, but do you install some of those during those hours, or do you keep all of this separate?
No, this is all kept separate.
Separate, okay, then that would be easier.
I've got a lot to do.
Okay, yes.
Can I make a suggestion? We just agree that we would spend the funds in this general amount and then discuss the exact how later so we can move forward. I mean, that's, maybe it's a building in site issue that should weigh in on this or not, but I think we can settle the money part. Is that agreeable to?
I agree.
Okay, so, I appreciate that, if the DNW is in your pocket, so you have that for reference, I, let's cut that down. So, the total for the heat pump replacement using numbers as reference from DNW, if that's fair.
Yep, yes.
1.8 million, and the treasurer and I agreed that it would be transferred as needed, not all at once, we'll just make those fund transfers as the bills come in, so it's not a total depletion at one time.
And that could happen over a period of years.
I think that the administrator's office would be the one that would time this out as to what makes no sense for what floors at what times. She's got to work with all the elected officials and the department heads to let them know about their destruction. I think that's a coordinated effort that would be, you know, pay the bills, but I think the organization of it would be a distortion.
I thought that we were replacing them when they failed.
We have been, but this is to formally say this is the direction that we're going to go in the form, so we can purchase multiple ones and get the discount, so that we can start that process of replacing a majority of them as they, because Gary's keeping track of which ones have already failed or are in the process.
And when we say fail, we mean critical fail, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but it's critical components that are the issue. If it's a blower motor or a circuit board, you know, that's not a problem. When we lose a compressor or a reversing valve, that is some serious stuff, because that has to come out of the ceiling. You don't want to put a torch up in the ceiling. I've had to do it several times, and it's like, we don't want to do that anymore. I hope that interferes in, I'll look at that.
Yes, we did.
And then we'll put to the VHS discussion.
Yep.
Moving on, thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Anytime, anybody have any questions?
So, this ends the conversation of utilizing DTR and ARCA funds. Moving down the page, just to remind you that now we're moving into general funds. You have pending statutory commitments that I keep updating you, that the net effect of all the drains coming to fruition in 2024, if that is to happen, the indications seem to be going that way, but that's up to the drain commissioner. We're at about 85,000 out of pocket after we prepay, and I recommend we prepay our assessments, we're at such a low amount now, we just prepay our assessments. You can make that decision as each drain comes before you, but I wanted you to know what we're looking at net-net. You've already approved the Leland Dam walkway, we didn't say walkway, but we have not moved the money. Instead, we will move it when there's an RFP, you've already proved it, but to move money into the dam fund right now, to keep the general fund. So, you just wait for the RFPs and the project, and you've already proved up to 666. Yes?
I'm a little confused, Kathy. About at our last Leland Dam Authority meeting, we put this on the back burner versus the hydraulics system.
Okay, and that's why we haven't moved the money.
Okay.
We're just, we said if you go ahead with it, whenever it is, you can have to go ahead to go. So, we just haven't moved that money yet, but I want you to know that there's, you've made a commitment, okay? And then the telephony recorder, we agreed to put that into the purchasing in '23. It was ordered, delivered, but not stalled until '24, so I did not amend the '23 budget for that. It's functional now in '24, and that's what your editors are looking for, is delivering functioning. So, we'll make an adjustment using general fund money to pay for that in '24. Now, your consideration items that you need to discuss today and decide on are listed under the '24 consideration. And to give you some scope, if you're to look at all of these things, the total commitment from the general fund, if you say, yep, we're doing it, we're at about $443,000. I've talked with the treasurer, the general fund is, it's all been enough, I mean, we have the money, and the timing of it, it's not all going to happen at one time, but he feels comfortable with it, he's got the assets freed up, so we will define a cash flow if you decide to go penny for penny, which we don't, but for discussion purposes, let's just talk about the project, and we can know that we've got the funding if you decide to go that way. So, I was hearing that Parks and Rec had a $55,000 capital outlay unspent in 2023. That amount was repeated in the '24 budget, 55,000. The Parks and Rec have presented that they would like to amend that line item to 110,000. In essence, take the '23's unspent, add it to '24, so that they have a 110. So, we've already budgeted 55, we've already approved it, it's to be an increase in that line item of 55,000 to 110, to allow them to work on their identified projects. So, that's one thing that I took from budget discussions.
So, that money is there that they didn't spend?
It rolled back into the general fund, so we have to, but they want 55,000 for '23 to offer '24, so we have to amend the budget and use fund dollars.
Okay.
Then, I have been told by your building safety department that the north side needs your attention, serious attention.
Serious.
So, the building official Amber said she could be here to talk to you about it, if you'd like to see her at a meeting. The inspectors are concerned, and so I don't think this can can get kicked down the road any further. In '23, I remember that there was a proposal by Michin to draw up engineering specs and do project management, or a firm to come in, or some construction to come in and fix the north side. That's about as far as it got. So, I put a number in here because it's been kicked around 400,000, 100,000, I've heard all sorts of numbers. You need to put some money forward to decide what you're going to do, and I stuck 150,000 here, just to get this discussion going.
So, it wasn't.
Because you're in serious need of attention from Amber.
So, that's not based on anyone's estimate?
No, just me picking a number and saying.
Averages.
Well, not entirely, I met with another engineer or construction manager who didn't think it would exceed that amount.
Okay.
Now, there's not been a formal proposal put out, we're still waiting to gauge somebody, but that is not a roof, and it is not a, it is just fixing the problem.
Okay. So, then the next thing is to Commissioner Ross's point, the dam head pellet seal replacement, we have committed to that seal replacement, we just haven't budgeted for it yet because it's capital outlay, and it's still on your list, so that's part of the full 400 and some thousand. And then we did budget a marker of 25,000 for the reseal on the parking lot and balance to be determined in '24. I put 40,000 there, just so, 65,000 roughly for the parking lot reseal, I think it's been coming in around 50,000. Chief Deputy Zibby, can you recall?
Uh-huh, between 35 and 50.
So, I just put a number there for discussion. I think you're committed to resealing because it's a cyclical thing, it comes up every three, four years, I believe, and so this is it. So, funds to come from general fund, if all things considered are rates are penny, it's about $443,000, and the treasurer is on board, and knowing it doesn't all happen at one time. It was just worth it. Commissioner, what do you think?
So, we can pay this out of general fund, but we've got, what do you have, 70, almost what, $90,000 we want to put into the dam? Is that everything? And is that, does that, what about the walkway, the bridge? Was some work done to that, or we have to do some work to that bridge?
That's the 66 further up in there.
No, not the roof.
The bridge.
And the bridge?
Roof and walkway.
And the walkway, okay, the walkway is the bridge and not the.
And again, that's been put on the back burner, it's up to code, it doesn't need anything immediately, but it will need it something.
Right, so.
More important is make sure that we get our hydraulics system updated, the seals ready.
But we have that, and we've got general inspections and painting. I guess the question would be, do we want to pull it out of general fund, or should we be looking at our special assessment district and get that set up so that it's just an easy roll? Because for, you know, for, for luck, talking that amount of money, do we want to look at that special assessment district again? Stuff just seems to keep coming with the dam.
I would like to say as a member of the dam authority, that is an asset owned by the county, and all of us benefit from having a functioning dam, so I think this is well within our, where our county funds should go is to support our county dam.
And some would also argue that certain people get more benefit out of. And some would also argue that certain people get more benefit out of, of the dam than others. And it's just a question of who is going to pay for it. So is it fair to say, you know, that, because it's not just the dam. You would argue that, well, everybody benefits from the lake. Well, county itself does benefit from the lake. We do in tax dollars. On the other hand, who is responsible for it? The dam is owned by the county, but that doesn't mean we can't, as we have in the past, put a special assessment district in line to help, to help cover that so it doesn't come out of the general fund entirely. And I don't think that's too much to, to consider. You know, there are, there are other lakes in the county where they pay 100% of taking care of their dams. And they would argue that, why am I also paying for this dam if the county isn't paying for our dam? So I just think it's a, I think it's a fair thing to say. If we set it up, it would be an easy, an easy roll to just continue to roll that.
So not knowing, I guess, that Commissioner Ross says the roof and walkway integral to the function of the dam? Or is that just in the pertinence that we have there for people to walk and look in?
Well, we do need the walkway in order to maintain the dam, yeah. So some of the functions that the dam does, we have to have a walkway over it. But again, the current situation is that that's in good shape. It's not a, it's not a prime concern. But making sure that we have replacement seals and we start to work towards a new hydraulic system that is better for us all is in the works. And again, I, I would like to see who, what list of counties in the state of Michigan that own the dam have a special assessment. I think that would be a fair, if we want to think about Commissioner Lotner's suggestion. I think we need some more data, some, some facts about how that is handled.
Is it, is it improvements that we're talking, saying they're not critical? Are they likely to happen in this next fiscal year?
The, the.
The roof and walkway.
We are putting that on the back burner, and I would say not to worry so much in 2024.
Can we just take it off the list?
Well, it's already in the list. I mean, it's already approved budget.
The 66?
It's just we aren't moving the money until there's our piece put out. You've already approved the walkway at a previous meeting, and I pulled up the minutes, and I got appreciated after that.
And Mr. Allen, you have more information about the MMRA report?
So MMRA, sure, thank you. MMRA, our risk management municipal authority, did an assessment on the walkway and on the, the roof at the dam. The roof at the dam is, is an issue from the standpoint that there's a leak in the roof, and that has the potential to impact the mechanical systems and the electric systems that manage the dam. So it is, although it is, I think it's been patched, and there's a temporary fix on it, it will have to be replaced in the near future. So there are those issues that have to be addressed. And like I said, the walkway, we confirmed that structurally it is, it is efficient for right now. There was an issue of if we want to maintain public passage on that walkway. Right now, they're saying that it's sufficient for just the use that it is intended for.
You're, you're moderating this meeting, so I was asking. I heard Melinda's idea on the assessment district. I think it's a small amount, and I think it's a, it's an amount that the county can't afford. And I think the lake associations would hit pretty hard with some of their other improvements. And I would prefer to reserve assessment districts for those expenses that are beyond our maintenance ability to, to, to provide. That's just me.
Sure, and I appreciate that, but, but what's been happening, because we've been a couple of years into it, we've been doing some work. We put the braking system on the hydraulics already for the safety feature. We did some cement work there. We did a ladder for there. We did the last inspection. I'm probably forgetting some things. So it's been nickel and diming. So that was why I, that's why I'm suggesting we set the assessment district up, and we just automatically bill it that way. I was going to ask you if you knew, how did we pay for the new dam? How do we pay for the new dam? Special assessment district, that dam. So we've already got that precedent set. We set that special assessment district up, built that new dam. It's just a logical continuation, in my opinion. Or, as you say, yeah, well, general, general fund can continue just to pay for it, and we just continually drain the general fund. And, and then pretty soon, general fund doesn't have the money, the general fund does. As I say, we've got other, other lakes in the county that are also getting hard paying for their own dams. And just because this one does have court order, I just think it would be a fair thing to do. So it obviously is the board's decision.
Commissioner Elga.
We could also make this repair, because it sounds like, we've talked about it for a long time, and we need to make it, and the funds are allocated. And then you could be looking into establishing an assessment district for future repair, for future costs. And we could be exploring that. But I would recommend that we deal with this. I've heard about the leak in the roof for a while. And then, and then explore the special assessment district.
We have the software now, so we bought the software, particularly.
So are we going to want to do motions on each recommendation, or?
This is a committee of the whole, so we're providing our, our collective ideas to Kathy.
And this would be to go to executive, knowing that the DC broadband contract is on your special meeting next. But conceptually, this is your capital outlay list for 2024 that needs to be addressed so that we can move forward and have the executive go to regular and say, yes, we're going to do these such projects. This is the amount of money, this is where it comes from, so that you have guidance for those meetings coming up. Now, the things that we didn't take off from the list, but we just put down below, are because they're pending. We're still in negotiation with charter. We don't have a proposed contract. I believe we will be seeing one sooner than later, which will agree with Administrator Allen. Yes, so we will be seeing a proposed contract that Chris Sher has shepherded and guided us toward in the near future. In the meantime, we will be receiving invoices for these services because we're not in contract.
But Kathy, to follow up earlier into Commissioner Elgaire's concerns, you know round numbers, and you and the treasurer have discussed this potential thing out there. Yeah, if you'd like, I mean, if that's, just, I mean, I just kind of think these things that we know are out there. Commissioner Elgaire has this concern that, you know, there's, that we do this, and then it's all gone. So I just wanted to say, hey, somebody's taken a lookout a little further and said there's possibilities to do this. So that's, I guess, my question. So let's, I mean, let's, I mean, if that broadband remaining is 1.2, and you got 250 in financial software, and you've got 50 in cameras, and those are just guest numbers. So there's like some million and a half in that bottom three items, give or take, not addressed right now.
Those likely will be addressed as we get closer to road collection and settlements, and we understand what the March settlement's going to be for taxes.
Right.
Is it going to be $3 million, or is it going to be $4 million? I can't tell you that right now. As we get closer to July, and we start getting our car collections, that's going to help us, you know, get back up to car. So to answer your question, we have vehicles that we're earning interest on right now. Once those are completed, we're not going to have interest for money market accounts for bonds or commercial paper. That's get through replenishing those pools. When we draw down to, say, another $24 million, it's going to be out of con balance. Albeit, we haven't calculated what our overage might be for collections in '23 and '24. So we'll have something there offset, which is likely, I mean, we're going to be drawing down some balance.
So I understood that we would still have enough money in DTR to cover charter or spectrum or.
That's somewhat subjective, because, like I said, I don't know exactly how much my settlement's going to be, and I don't know when that spectrum contract's going to come due. If it's 2025, first quarter.
Hopefully, it'll be this quarter.
This quarter for $1 million, that would be very difficult to figure.
No.
So what are our options?
I just, I'm sorry, but I can't believe that they, without a contract in place, are going to complete that work in the first quarter for $1 million.
No, I mean, we're going to get our contract. We're going to get a number of, what I'm saying is, we'll be getting a definitive number.
But he's just talking about expenditures, so when will this money be actually spent, and so.
And not to overspeak, but some of the other contracts were reimbursed on base on completion. For stages, I'm not privy to that. So as you ladder these things out, the agreements will be more clear. So I'll have a better information as to when the funds will be available and how much. So as it's a moving target, we're playing with somewhat of a range. This settlement isn't a sure thing yet, and subjections haven't come in yet. So we do have some ways that could offset the pending, but if it occurs prior to 12/31/24, it's likely going to affect our con balance.
We also have equalization working on the taxable value settles out in March. We'll know the impact of the activity of 2023 with regard to uncapping. This new build's taxable value hasn't been determined. And the estimated revenue for 2024 is just that estimated. As soon as Andrew and all the assessors in the county finish their work, and we have a better number, we'll look at that with Andrew. We recalculate and find out if we've got a higher revenue that we had not anticipated yet. Because that number is never finalized until we're already in our calendar year.
Yes, typically using current year projections, and I do it at 95%. And that's prior to '21. I think that's kind of how I did it.
Conservative.
We're taking a more aggressive stance and looking at adjusting that prior to year end because we're using more of our resources.
And I think, to John's point, we are very sensitive to the ebb and flow of the balances in our accounts because we, we're on a downward trajectory using the final collection of the 2023 taxes, that funds us until we start collecting again in July, and then we go back up again. So that's why we're very careful about contracts when they're due, lathering, as John mentioned, his investments as he makes them, so they mature appropriately for us. So there's a lot of, a dance, so to speak. I'd say.
That's, that's, that's pretty close. I mean, that's as much as we can ask. And I guess, I guess, as this is a committee of the whole, and really it is just to give our interim finance director guidance to bring to us for the executive meeting. It's just, is there any further discussion? Do you have any questions on the direction that I, that we are going right now, I guess?
So if we kept that 858 in reserve, as it's been kept in reserve for two years, to fund the charter contract, is there not money right now? You've always said that you would be able to pay the, what we've committed to point. So my concern is that people have seemed to forgot, forgotten, and that we have a commitment to the entire county. And I perhaps made a mistake two years ago when I approved that because people seem to have short memories. And I sure want to make sure we don't forget that we have a commitment to the entire county. So I'd like to save those monies.
May I suggest that, again, what's presented is considering our needs for cash flow. So we would have come to you and said, use general fund or DTR for that? If we said, think that that's appropriate, but we think it's appropriate to use the ARPA funds right now. As we draw those down, settlement will occur, and general fund will be reimbursed for any back taxes later on, and we'll be moving forward with settlements. So DTR will know how much to disperse. As to your question, will there be money available for charter? Likely, there'll be money in DTR, but I cannot commit that until I go through the settlement and understand what I fund out, so to speak. Because otherwise, in '25, me or my successor will have to borrow potentially to settle for taxes. So you're kicking the can down the road to finance a project today or tomorrow in the hopes that the revenues are going to come in higher, and we're going to make those adjustments. And our settlement will be average to below average, so that we'll have additional funding available there. So I think, I can speak for myself at least, that the recommendation to use the ARPA stands.
I am just going to want a commitment from the board that we will, that we are committed to funding completion for the entire county.
Well, hopefully, by our February executive board meeting, we might.
Have that amount.
Know something. But I think, I think, I think I've seen everybody's head shaking in a positive way on what Kathy's presented.
Yep.
And I think it's time to move this to the executive committee for official approval.
Agreed.
So the only other thing that Kathy and I have talked about that isn't on your, on your list is the issue that we've had with building and safety vehicles. So there's about an overage on the 2023 vehicles that were never delivered, that will need to be ordered for them. And Kathy, I know you've done some research on this, but we're basically talking about monies that were allocated in 2023 that now will need to be increased in 2024 because the cost of vehicles have gone up. So can you speak to, to that a little bit, please? Thank you.
Knowing that Amber, building official Amber Weathers, beautiful, or is canceled for two Rangers, and just knowing the need of High Clarence Vehicle, the interceptor that she's leasing from the motor pool, it just is not going to cut, she's been approved to purchase two vehicles. The Rangers, I believe, aren't even being made anymore. I just asked her to make one phone call and just find out something in the Ford line. But we can also ask Administrator Allen to work with her to maybe look at Tacomas, Colorado's, Canyons. But Ford F-150, she would be looking at about $24,000 more for two vehicles. She's proved up to $70,000 for Rangers, so it'd be more like, I did the math, $94,000.
A piece?
Whatever they, you know, want to get.
Each?
No, that's two.
Total, thank you, thank you.
Building Safety is funded by themselves. We don't subsidize them, we don't subsidize us. They repay us for buildings and grounds. They repay us for computers, telephones, whatnot. So this would be out of their fund balance. They have sufficient. They have about a million dollar budget. This is one of the larger offices in the building around the campus. They've got a little over a million in fund balance. And so to, to Administrator Allen's point, they'll probably be bringing an EBS to you at executive for a choice that makes sense for them, and I'll let them handle it. But I'm just letting you know that department has the money. They can get a vehicle that works for them, hopefully, and let's just solve their problem. And then, that's addressing the motor pool. We do have these retired vehicles, one, and then it's Commissioner, we're asking about the. We've talked to Cedar Auto Repair, Hoxsey Garage, Radio North pulled in the computers and the, the equipment out. And then Administrator Allen's maintenance department, when they last looked at it, it seems to be in defect. There doesn't seem to be anything that was caused when Radio North pulled the equipment, from what they can tell. And the recommendation is solid access. Because to find out the electrical. Because to find out the electrical, we'd certainly get under the bash and figure out what's going on and it might just not.
What was the quote from, what was the quote from?
I couldn't even get an appointment. They're three to four weeks out.
Okay.
It pulls scratches.
The difference in selling a defective vehicle and selling a vehicle that's been repaired could be, it could be thousands right now, looking at what these, the resale value on those cars. So is it we're getting that appointment and getting that estimate because if it's a, you know, $4,000 repair, clearly sell it. But if it's a $1,000 repair, the difference could be a lot, you know, it could be way towards it.
And typically, the motor pool is administered by the administrator of this office. They handle auction, they handle, the motor pool is, so I'm not passing it, I'm just saying, I hear what you're saying, have vehicles that should go for auction. We need to probably make some.
So when we thought the wires got cut by Radio North, are we sure that's not what happened right now when they pulled the police radios?
I think Duane Laska talked to Radio North and they talked about it and they realized that it seems to be the switch defect between the Frost and Pete is what I wrote in notes.
Well, can we, can we wrap this up from where we're at and move that on to executive? I mean, I'm not opposed.
Yeah, I think we need to add a, I think we need to announce it on that car. If it's a switch and we lose thousands on a vehicle, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Don't disagree, but I think that's like business that can be handled later.
Okay.
We need an EBS for purchase of trucks.
Okay.
Commissioner, what?
Yeah, just one very minute thing, the Parks and Recreation, I mean, I, the leader of parks we have is the greatest thing in the world. We doubled it to 110,000. I just saw a couple eyebrows raised in the, in the people here saying, why did, why we didn't spend $55,000 last year? And I just want to assure these people that we do have $110,000 worth of improvements laid out, okay? That's just, I'm not against it, I'm just saying it looks bad that I got 55 I didn't spend, but we're going to give them double, okay?
I think there's a hard appeal right now for the physical repair at Old Setters Park and I think the RFP deadline is in March for these folks.
Coming up.
Coming up.
Okay.
That's the biggest proportion, Mitch.
I think those expenditures still have to be approved anyway, we're just, we're working budget money, so.
Right, I just want to bring, it just looks, to have it, not spend it and double it, I, that just doesn't look right.
Well, and I know you all know we have one more meeting before our hard stop at 1:45 for the Health Department meeting that's here. So let's conclude this meeting with Kathy. We'll see all this back at Executive Committee.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Really hard work. Thank you, John.
We now are at the end of our agenda and would invite public comment of up to five minutes on a topic that you'd like to share with us. Yes or no?
Jeez, we've got to go through this again.
Amy Weller, great woman. I think before we do any hiring of a controller or a CFO, we, our view as the board should be looking at Sean Cowan's assessment, all of the problems, as you know, he resigned, he was a fifth record designer. He was actually brilliant. If you read this report, he tells you all the problems. He expresses every single problem and then he gives you suggestions. So I would really like to take a look at a couple of things. Simple concepts like dating a drill entry on the date of the event are not followed. So what we have here is two invoices with two timestamps that conflict. In the same invoice, August 16th, '23, one according to the timestamp was, you see, August 18th, which was two days later. The other, maybe this is the copy, this is maybe the original, I'm not sure, but it was dated October 2nd. So we've got timestamp alterations, which would appear to be a violation of Michigan 75048. So who'd be pointing to investigate that? And he says this goes along with time, according to his survey. He also says, finance environmental culture needs immediate attention, transparency, little to no reporting to the VOC, standing finance materials, which is almost as close as the processing of invoice level. So are you not getting the information that this man worked very diligently on putting together? You have this?
Absolutely.
Have you read it?
Yes.
Okay, so then we have, so I'd really like to know what you're going to do about the gacha culture that he talks about. He also says in here somewhere that there's an alleged violation of IRS. So that doesn't sound good. He's working on that and how are we going to resolve that? IRS violation, why do we have that? And so we're going back to this invoice, I see that the principal at Raymond was making 540 an hour. I know pardon returns are a bit much, I'm sure. Who is that person? Is this the person that was the Michelle Potters' principal? She's got CPA next to her title and then she has she, her, hers. Is that what we're doing? Are we going woke and going broke? Is that what we're doing? So the principal at Raymond made 540 an hour, the senior manager made $405 an hour, and staff, $210 an hour. So that's like a lot of money. I don't know, is that $100, something like that, an hour? And they're not picking up on the invoices of their own invoice being timestamped immediately? And Sean says in here that we're not, when the invoice comes in, we don't put in the right kinds of numbers. That's, that's unacceptable. So who's doing this? Why are they doing it? And so I think we need to get to the bottom of this. And taking it away, taking our finance department and our human resources out in '21 was a coup, okay? That was a governmental coup. And now we are suffering the repercussions of all of this, five finance directors and I think you see it, Commissioner Kramer, I know you see it louder, I wish you two could get together because we're looking at you as the people's commissioners because you're asking questions, you're asking questions about redactions. Can you please work together to do this out? Because we need to know what's going on with the finances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Because of my late evening morning, I'm going to keep my comments covered in the middle. I have to observe people who are at their time, please. Here's a copy. And this, just a note.
He doesn't need it.
He was. I took the time, I wanted to pass on.
Thank you.
Cover these briefly, ready to, I'll video on the show.
Thank you.
Before we, before we start, could you share with the board what you've given me here or did you give it to everybody?
No, I just gave it to you, you can do the chair.
Okay. Good. I'm not sure I understand it.
Okay, we have, there's, there's, we can do this in an efficient way and they yielded their time to me to be able to do this without any pause and break, having 10 people come up here. We need that much time and this is what I'm going to do. I present what I present, I want to talk about what we're going to talk about. So what they're doing is they're to condense it to make it more efficient, so it's faster rather than piecemealing it and having to start and stop and start and stop and start and stop and start and stop.
So you're asking for 55 minutes?
No, well, I'm not going to take close to that time. There are that many, I, you know, hey, I, no, it won't be anything near that. This could be more like half of that if that, if that.
Is that part of our board rules?
For 10 people that would like to come up here and they can kill five minutes themselves.
I think, I think we need to, and I'll take some direction from my commissioner colleagues, but we haven't done that. I think everybody here can have their up to five minutes, but we don't, I don't believe, and we could take a break and check if we want to.
I've heard it was done in the past by previous.
I, I don't think it's a good precedent to start. It has been done in the past, but I don't think it's a good precedent and we do have another meeting, so.
Well.
That's one reason for consolidating, just have involved on, we've done it, not.
And we do offer public comment. Do we have a ruling on that though or there must be in our rules, something?
I don't believe we do have a ruling and I'd like to take a break and get one.
Defer to the clerk.
I would, I would like to take.
Or we can just continue as.
I'd like to take a break and, and get a ruling and we'll be back with you in just a couple minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jim Prober.
Wait, can I, can I introduce what I just said once we're back?
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry.
The clerk and the administrator and I did talk to the attorney and we have a great deal of flexibility on how we handle this. And I've just talked to him about a couple of different options and I think the option that we, one option is everybody could take their five minutes as long as they weren't redundant and that'd be their 55 minutes of public comment. One is for me to negotiate with him and say, you can't have 55 minutes, but you can have some amount of time to get the message out. Or one is to add it to the agenda of a future meeting. And what we've just talked about is giving him 10 minutes today to introduce his topic and adding it to the February meeting as a topic, at which time there'd be no more than an hour given to this topic. And so I think that's where we are. I think that's fair to the audience and I think it's respectful of our time and I think, Michelle, it's consistent with what we heard.
Yes.
So if that's okay, we'll start the clock for 10 minutes, please.
I won't cover too much on the handouts, it'd be nice if you would look at it, it's relating to security, serious security flaws in Illinois County, the election computer software. Just turning the page as prior to the election real quick. That's cool.
McDonald's.
Keep going.
Okay. Okay. It was discovered in the court, or right off the bat, our Michigan election security advisory warned us against, strongly remind or recommend that doing a test on the software that we use, which was never done in October prior to the election in 2020, was never done. And this is our state that said, do this, check the source file, do a penetration test. Next thing, court document, you can look at that and you're going to see that supposedly the people that certified our equipment back in the day were out of certification themselves. I'm kind of a certification guy, I worked for DDA for about 10 years, I do that at home company. DA is digital electronic automation, I always calibrations and certifications. I've got a little background in that. And there was nothing done. There's no proof of anything. It's no different what they got from where you take something to a notary and have a witness. Okay, last, or a couple of other things real quick, meeting up this time, just 10 minutes. Mesa County in there, when they do do upgrades, when they do anything, you know on your phone, if they ever had to update some things, we may not be there again. It raises stuff. So if you don't make a backup of it, you use diligence like Tina Pierce did in Mesa when she backed up her hard drive that had the election software on it prior to the state coming in and then updating it, in there you'll see just a fraction of all the type, all the files that apply, federal law you're supposed to keep that were blown away. She can compare it because she has the original and she's going through activate, update, brand new damn update. Okay, last one real quick was, some of you are familiar with the Edson report or the Edson research, they're the guys that come up with the numbers when elections being, when being run, they give you live updates. X amount of percentage coming in from whatever county all around the country. Okay, how do you think they get that? They get it through email. How do they get that? There's hardware on our servers that allows them to get it. And we're going to detail now, that will come up in your agenda. Okay, I want to start this to get as much of this in as I can. I might just jump to the end for a conclusion portion of it. Let's underestimate who this person is. Okay. He pulled it together. Oh. Okay. Okay. The lateral portion of this is all safe, so it shouldn't take long to shut it down. Oh, excuse me for a slight delay, but I guess it's on my clock this time. Okay, you're going to be hearing from the first one, the original programmer who has to write election software that works. Those frames are better than that. You can, um, this is. Nice one. Heard of you.
It's a house with the internet off which.
Never works.
We need to do it.
No.
It's all good. Okay, so I might have to win with actually talking about it. Going to have to see the way of my, I'll, it's going to come in up this morning. Okay, well, I'm not as exciting as what you were referring, which is very disappointing. Anything else I can do, I can do real quick? I can just speak? It doesn't work because I don't have a laptop that I could go up here real quick. So I actually have a flash drive, I could put in the TV, not working, you know, just a flash drive, get a TV, not in a computer, and we could play some of it on a monitor.
I think we'll have to do that next month, next time.
We had this set up before on the monitor and then somebody yanked that ability away from me earlier. Okay, off the cuff, why are there security flaws? What you were going to watch was the original programmer who wrote, was asked in Florida back in 2000 to write a software program that would set an election to only produce one layer, a certain layer that they determined. So it was set to go 5149. He wrote the program, he explains the program, they never use it, he suggests, strong success that, okay, this is how you do it, so this is what you look for and the first thing you could do is you just get rid of the software, you get rid of the computers. And his rationale was, who owns that universe? A program, you're in a virtual world now, you have no human interaction, you have no human chain of custody. When it's not in a virtual, when it's not in the real world and it's in a digital realm, you don't see it, you can't see it. You have to bring in experts that can maybe decipher what that code is because then again you have to be open to bring those people in. He goes through that in great detail. The next person that was going to be coming up was a former, somebody that might be with the CIA, considered one of the. the CIA, considered one of the brightest guys there. He's a senior cybersecurity chief of the FBI. He, after Snowden released that information about what the government's capabilities were, he has been in the business and has cardinal knowledge of it, as he talks about in his declarations of the court, of what he's done. He doesn't give graphic details just what the capabilities are and what he uses, and what he's found with our voting machines and voting systems, and how they use them in other countries from then on. That was the second individual, Naveen Ishar, I believe, is the first gentleman's name was Clint, uh, excuse me, Clint Hurst. It wasn't a move on from there, why I'm disappointed, I've got to tell you this because I'm probably about this, not near the impact. And many of you have probably seen this, if you've watched any of the news, not necessarily the main screen or mainstream news on regular cable channels over the air, they wouldn't necessarily report it, but there's enough documentation out where people are saying via the internet, machines aren't connected, machines aren't connected, Chris Kravsky came out, SISAL, which is an under umbrella company or umbrella organization for online security, people that should know and that do know, and that's why they're calling SISAL. I think it stands for Center for Internet Security Agency. Chris Kravsky came out boldly, said, safest election we've ever had. Safe, no problem. Except he had to walk it back when Ron Johnson, a senator, I believe, from Wisconsin, had a meeting, a Senate hearing, and he was being asked questions, and these senators trying to, you know, get him to say, but this is what we're seeing, this is what the public sees as elections go on, and you see the consequences. The only thing to do that is if there is some kind of committee, who would choose all of it? That's why they lie. It's written in the article, like, everybody's seen it, can't really deny that. Finally, at the very end of that conversation, I don't know if you as well as you have seen it, Kravsky said, maybe we'll. But he had to walk back what he boldly stated not a couple months later. Then it goes on with politicians, prominent politicians and some bureaucrats. The bureaucrats were more or less saying, the machine's not connected, the machine's not connected. And then you have politicians and I'll just, I'll just key in on one of the last ones that comes up.
Thank you. Before, before the February meeting, let you and I meet, and we'll make sure that we.
Am I timed up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's your 10 minutes, so.
Okay.
But we'll meet and make sure we meet with the IT director so that if you need AV for February, then you will have it.
Well, that's where you're not able to be able to see it.
So thank you very much. Thank you. And sorry we had to do that ruling, but thank you for your commitment. Any other public comment? I will get, get with you right after the meeting for a time we can meet you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Dawkins, leaving township. Interesting, the word woke. I love it when people take a word that I am not used to, how I think they're using it, so. 10 symptoms of the woke mind. Number one, you read books and don't burn them. Number two, you embrace science. Three, you are willing to change your mind when new information comes available. Four, you understand that most issues are not black and white. Five, you believe in true equality for all people. Six, you like to share. Seven, you embrace cooperation. Eight, you respect others' rights. Nine, you believe culture and the arts have value. And 10, you care for the planet and all its life. So if somebody is woke, good for them. I like those characteristics of it. Another thing is, I quite often hear the word taxpayer, how we have to worry, that we are concerned about our taxpayers. It is not just taxpayers that this board of commissioners need to be concerned with. We need to be concerned with people who are electors, eligible voters, and that does not mean that they have, that they necessarily pay taxes in both counties. So I would like to see that overall thought in people's minds when we talk about what is the board, what is the county here for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Bill, we sent a comment township. And no fraud, that's what we have to have, and that's one person, one ballot, one vote, one day. And I did hear this comment that this was one of the commandments of the woke. Number one, you read books and don't burn them. And the librarians at TC West and TC Central, they don't allow anyone who's not woke to read books. They've got 500 books promoting LGBTQ at TC West, and not one promoting anything on the other side. A reasonable compassionate view of homosexualism, not one book. The library at Woodmere, they've got over 800 books, and they have one. It's a good book, showing the other side, by Michael Brown, Dr. Michael Brown. But anyway, going on to what I like to talk about is the election fraud, and back to the summary of election fraud in the 2020 presidential election in the swing states. There's 142 different bullet items showing the fraud there, and, and I just, I started that from first thought, but Georgia, 12% up in the evening, Wisconsin, 5%, Pennsylvania, 15%, Michigan, 10%. And then they stopped the counting, and they reset the PID controller or the cruise controller, and what Jim was just talking about, I don't have a chart here, but in the Georgia election, they had like 90 times in a row, the results coming in on the Edison wire, and it was 51, 50.1 and 49.9. 90 times in a row. So that's what's happened, and it's pretty obvious. So the election was over. However, precincts in Atlanta, Detroit, Philadelphia, Phoenix, and Milwaukee kept counting until they reached the results, they decided the outcome, which was the opposite of the will of the voters. That's why we're slaves, we don't get what we voted for. Georgia went from having a total of 4.7 million votes already reported for the state, according to Brad Reps, Henningsberger, on November 4th, to certifying almost 5 million. At one point in the evening, I saw the report, he said that there's only 2% of the vote left, Trump is up so much that even if they had all the votes go for Biden, Trump would still win. But that all changed. And that reminds me of a bit from Carrie Lake. Carrie Lake, she was running for governor, and now she's running for Senate in Arizona. I just saw a recording, got to Google this. She had a recording that was secretly on, she must have had her phone on when the Republican head of the GOP from Arizona came to her and said, Carrie, you can watch it, save me the song, Carrie, there's people out east, there's people out east. He didn't say who they were, I don't know who they were, but they would offer you a lot of money if you just stepped back from this for two years. And she constantly came back. No, this is about getting Trump out on Twitter. But anyway, how many people are, this is a unified, it's not Democrats against Republicans. How much are people offered in these situations to go along with this sham that's going on? So the election was over, but, all right. And then Arizona, they called Arizona before they called Ohio. Ohio, Trump won by eight points. It's two time zones ahead of Arizona, a faction called Arizona to give the advantage to Biden. Anyway, that's, that's about all the time, but it's just, the machines, you cannot trust them. And I've got information on the Georgia fraud in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment? Yes, Carrie?
Thanks again to each one of you for your service as our commissioners. Thank you. I know you might get sick of hearing me say that, I hope not, because I do mean it, just trying to say it. After hearing from the gentleman from MSU, we heard from one of our commissioners a suggestion that you, as our county elected board, not only follow the Reiman report, Reiman report, I guess it is, from years ago, but that you are current, I'm sorry, but that you, our current board, elected board, is somehow bound to follow this report. From what I understand, this motion was made, to use the report, by a prior commissioner who's no longer serving on our current elected board. And in spite of today's commissioner's suggestion, this report is by no means an official guide for our current board's decision-making, and certainly holds no legal binding or any sort of mandate for our current elected board to follow. I've only glanced at the Reiman report, I intend to dig into a bit more, but we can't help but wonder if we are to judge from the debacle of a process our county government has been dragged through these past three, almost three years by actually following the Reiman report, or it was beginning to do so. We respectfully encourage the board to take what might have been helpful in this report, leave the rest, forge our own way forward. We have great respect and, and we have great belief that you guys can do that, that's why we elected you. So we're interested in forging our own way. This Reiman report and what we've seen so far is not something to be taken point by point and actually followed. And I don't believe there's any mandate, legal or otherwise, for you, our elected board, to do that. So that, and then my final point is in regards to the ongoing conversation of whether or not it's time to retire our county election machines, paper ballots, hand counted elections, one day. I imagine you can see now that this conversation is unlikely to go away anytime soon. There's an ever-growing number of people from the middle, from the left, not just from the right, it's becoming less and less partisan, that are seeing a problem with these machines. It's handy, it seems, you would think it would be a time saver. We understand in our own lives that what the technology looks and promises to be helpful ends up costing us a lot of time and a lot of effort. We're all caught up in that with our phones and with our devices. So there's a real strong argument that it's not even doing initially what we were hoping to do. At any rate, the conversation's unlikely to go away anytime soon. I think that hopefully is becoming clear to you. But what we will continue to make very clear, and this is my reason for bringing it up, we see tactic used by people who, for whatever the reasons are, have no desire to leave these machines behind and return to what we did a mere, I mean, it's just been a couple decades. Those folks tend to immediately jump on the idea that we're criticizing the clerks or that we somehow take exception to the clerks. Now, I'm speaking for me and some, that we love and respect our county clerk and our township clerks, and don't hear us get lattering liar on that part, that is not a valid point. Our, the exception we take with these machines has nothing to do with the awesome people that sacrifice so much time and effort to run these elections. They're either being guided by a top-down scenario that's being told something that isn't true, and I'd like to get to the bottom of it, but more importantly, we just, as a body of voters, we want to be able to trust these elections again. You don't have to go very far back, and it was Republicans that came up with the machine idea that, please don't forget that, they were the ones that introduced this. Democrats for years are the ones that are on record to this day that took exception to those machines and proved them not trustworthy. So it truly isn't a partisan issue. Right now, it seems to be business working to the favor of one party. But again, this conversation's not going to go away, and we want everyone to understand we love and appreciate our clerks with their knowledge, one more than praying that they will stay in their positions and help us make the transition away from machines and back to paper ballots, thank you. Single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Yes, sir. Were you one of the ones on this list, the sign?
Yes.
Then I would ask you to keep it short because we gave some of your time away.
Okay, I'll try to be brief.
Thank you.
My name is David Mosher, and I live in Sutton's Bay, and I understand a lot of the, appreciate this opportunity, but I understand a lot of concerns that voters and people's concerns are about paper ballots and their emotions about it. When the elections occurred around the country, there was a period on One American News where they were having, showing the testimonies for almost 10 days. My wife and I watched it all, and the testimonies were from the legislatures of Wisconsin, and Michigan, Arizona, and Pennsylvania. And poll workers, we heard hundreds of testimonies from poll workers all over the country about what they saw as clear violations of how the polls should be operated. They saw, talked about USP sticks that appeared out of nowhere, trucks coming from New York to Pennsylvania in the dead of night, filled with ballots. I mean, there were testimonies on and on from many people describing clear violations in Detroit. The conservative or Republican poll observers were driven out of their room, the polling room, and pizza boxes were put all over the windows. I mean, these are real facts. Of all these people that complained about this, called the FBI. I mean, of all these state legislatures and all the hearings I heard, everybody said they called the FBI, and then that one person said, the FBI responded to these complaints. So you wonder how people create a lot of these concerns and fears, it's because of real facts. And then we were told that it was the fairest election in history because Trump and the lie lawyers who brought these cases up, they lost all the cases. But the real reality is, 51 of the cases they claimed, of course, the left complaints, were all, were founded, that were never, basically that they were suggesting the media said they were lost, they were never heard because of lack of standing. But the press manipulates all this information, and the realities are what I'm describing, and that's why people do get, have concern, they would love to see hand counted paper ballots back, because they see these, these reports, the investigations that were followed up on, and these are all realities. This isn't tin foil head stuff. It's, and a lot of legislatures and secretary states in different states change the rules to the last minute, and that's pretty well, now, it's central knowledge, too. So these are, I'm just placing some of the concerns that, how people get so warmed up about this, because many people view this as, it wasn't a stolen election. But thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Oh, my God.
That's Laura, that's not.
Laura Tarzus.
I love her.
I just had some thoughts related to broadband.
I just had some thoughts related to broadband. And I understand the concept of trying to help people who are lacking in their resources and ability to receive internet services. But have we considered there are people who, A, don't want to use the point broadband system that have gotten numerous flyers from this summer? I mean, I don't know how many, I started collecting them. I have a little pile going of all the mail from point broadband services trying to recruit people to join and paying their fee. But what about the people who just plain don't want internet at all? So then we're footing the bill or they are footing the bill for a service that they are interested in using, A, or for whatever reason, whether it's a budget related. So if it is a budget reason, then they're purposely trying to keep their budget down by not paying for internet services. But their taxes are going to go up because they have to pay for this internet service that they're not even going to use. The other thing is, and then it clarifies me when campaigns go, is this point broadband installation currently only on the east side? Is what it sounded like that one was implying was that she wants to see that it also gets completed on the west side. I would love to see a demographics of the people in the community and the household income demographics. Because the idea that we've been hearing is that there are people who need these services that aren't able to afford them. So it's a generous thought. But are we really reaching that demographic by this huge expense, which we can't even complete paying for, obviously? And even though Charter graciously reduced their fee from 3.9 million to 1.1 million, it was very generous of them to reduce that. But still, how many people in the demographics of the east side want that service, are still going to be paying for the service, even if it's supposed to be helping them because they can't afford it? Touch 22 contacts. But on the west side, that is a significant demographic of summer residents, extremely high income wealth and very spread out national park land. So doesn't even, do we really want to put at that such huge expense that we can't even afford to finish paying on the east side? Also into the west side? And who's actually benefiting? Is it really going to be benefiting people who are that low income, that, I mean, significant enough to force them to still pay for it? If there are a few of them that live over there? Bill, there is some public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Thank you. Any commissioner comment? We do have a special session scheduled today. I guess I'm looking for some direction because I suspect by the time we started the special session, even though we have an important agenda, after we got done with public comments, we would have to adjourn. And we'd have to do public comments again at the end of that meeting because we do have this room reserved for the Board of Health meeting at 2:00 PM and they need it about 10 minutes before that. Commissioner Algar?
I'm very concerned because something was taken off the agenda last meeting that was not supposed to be taken off. And we have a contractor who has been waiting patiently to be paid for his work. And if we do not have a meeting, what he will hear once again is, oops, not yet. And we've been doing, playing with this since December.
I hear that.
Do you want to, I mean, I just for discussion's sake, with respect to Commissioner Algar, could we, would people entertain amending the agenda, just include items two and three, which seem like we could get through pretty quickly? And then schedule another meeting for the rest of those items? Just as a suggestion.
I would support that.
Amending what meeting?
Amending this upcoming, I don't know if we can, can we pull things out of the.
Yeah, you don't pull things, you can't.
So if we pulled everything but two and three out of the next meeting, we get that little piece of business taken care of and just asked to allow us to get, I mean, I can't tell you not to say stuff, but just. We just got to get it done somehow on this one, so.
We have work to do.
Is it fair to ask who would want to make public comment before the next meeting?
Well, that's the next meeting, so let's move on.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.